All right, any calls for me in order? First item is a roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
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 Okay. Uh, next item will be invocation from, uh, Ray Gurney for Cross Creek Baptist Mission, all by Flick's leaders from Alderman Station.
Father, we're really grateful to be here in this place tonight with these Swedish people who have become friends. And I think for their dedication and, and the hard work that they put into making Green Valley a wonderful place to live, I should watch over all of those who dedicate their lives to protecting us and, uh, to all of the wonderful things, protect our homes and our properties and, and we're thankful for that. Thank you for this great city that we live in, our schools and teachers and all of those who just absolutely dedicate their life to doing great things. We're thankful for that. So I would ask you to watch over them and, and give them a safe time as they do their work, bless their families and hold them together when they go through difficult times. And I just pray you give them your mercy and your grace. And we thank you for your United States of America, the wonderful place that we live, and I ask you to protect it in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen.
Okay, next item is approval of the agenda.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to add one item under new business. It will be discussion regarding Jackson County permitting of public swimming pools.
Okay. If I have a question to amend the agenda to add that item under new business?
So many.
Question from Alderman West, have a second?
Okay.
Second Alderman Stanley, any discussion? Hmm? See none, no, fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign.
Aye.
Agenda is amended. See no proclamations, then we'll move on to citizens' participation. Uh, we ask that citizens come forward to the microphone and podium and address the board. Please give your name and address for the record. Have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
Not about payday loans.
(laughing).
My name is Jan Grill, I live at one zero three five Southwest Ephraim. I just had two questions. Uh, one is, um, on the, on the cut through, sidebar cut through behind the new bus bar, I noticed that the, the, uh, grass all turned brown and I, I wondered if weed killer had been used by the city on each side of the little creek or how it was that that area died off quickly.
Is that the remediation, is he doing remediation here?
Yeah, I'm assuming that's, uh, the, yeah, uh, Mister Flick owns, uh, some property and he's doing some wetland mitigation and restoration. And so they've been, uh, going through doing some different, uh, applications of herbicides killing all of the non-native grasses and they'll be starting over.
Okay, and is this like in accordance with the conservation commission or something?
Yeah, he's actually permitted under federal law through court of engineers.
Okay. I was just concerned when I saw that.
Yeah, he, he has to get rid of all the stuff that shouldn't be there and it'll come back, stuff that shouldn't be, so.
Okay, I was just, from an environmental point of view, I was just concerned.
Yeah.
Um, and the other is, when I first moved here, ten years ago now, it's hard to believe, um, uh, uh, garbage trucks came down and turned around in our cul-de-sac, I think at first one and then two on Wednesday. And believe me, I'm not, I'm a small business pro person, uh, but now I, we have a garbage truck comes down, uh, Ephraim on Tuesdays and one on Fridays, which means that trashcans are out three days a week, not to mention the, the noise. And it's quite a bit of noise for us in the cul-de-sac because they have to come in and, and I just wondered if it, if, if there was any possibility that the companies that pick up in the city could be asked to do it on the same day, um, so that we just have trashcans out on the street one day a week and we, we deal with the, the trucks being there just one day a week. That was my only other thing, so, thank you.
No, we can certainly reach out to the companies. I know there's, I know one of them moved their day, do we have, so we have three days? I mean, I know one today was the fiscal day.
That's, that's correct.
And then somebody, somebody just recently moved to Tuesday, I think, right? There's one on Friday too?
And there's one on Friday, comes down our street anyway.
Friday. I can have Shanae look into it and find out. Yeah, I know she's, I don't need to talk. Quite a discussion regarding disposal services lately. Okay. Yeah, we, we've added it. Kind of a new thought. All right. Uh, anyone else wish to address the board? See none, move on to consent agenda.
Mayor, move, we accept the consent agenda.
I have a question, Alderman West, to create consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Arnold, any discussion? See none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign. See no previous business, move on to new business. First item under new business is a chamber of fireworks permit for the Grain Valley Fair.
Shanae's been working on this. Come on up here.
(laughing).
Come on up here. Well, usually Shanae would talk, I know Shanae's the one that's done all the stuff with it. I know-
Well, she's got a paperwork for, we turn everything in, uh, that we need to. Uh, what we'd like to do is we'd like to shoot off, uh, have a company come in and set off a professional fireworks, uh, display Saturday evening starting around, figuring around eight thirty, nine o'clock. Um, we will be shooting the fireworks off in, uh, the back parking lot of Whiskey Tango so that everyone at the fair can see them. Um, they will come in, they'll shoot them off, uh, they'll clean everything up when they leave, uh, so that's our intent. Any questions?
And they had to provide diagrams and fallout and all that, so.
Yes, maybe that's difficult.
That's all, I think the state fire marshal.
Right, well, that's been changed.
So, Chief, need an approval for the asking of the board, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions?
I'm going to approve the fireworks display for that.
Okay. I think most of them over in Johnston to approve.
Second.
Second Alderman Headley, any discussion? See none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign. Next item under new business is, is the Jackson County Pool.
Yes, Mister Mayor, members of the board, a few weeks ago, the city received a letter from Jackson County, um, regarding a new program that they're wanting to roll out. And what they're wanting to do essentially is, uh, begin to permit public swimming pools. So, if you think of a public pool, it would be, uh, you know, ours, for example, an HOA owned swimming pool, any type of pool that's used for, uh, you know, people besides just a single occupant or a single user to come in and use. Uh, they're wanting to permit that to be able to provide, uh, two inspections per year at a pretty nominal fee. Um, Jackson County, uh, is looking for this to go before the legislature, before the end of the year, and, uh, they would like to know that they have the support of the local governing bodies in each community, uh, at least to, to find out, you know, kind of what the, the support at the local level is for that. So with that, I'm gonna ask Miss Deb Cee to come up and, um, provide or correct anything that I missed or messed up.
I think it's better.
All right.
Uh, and we include, um, hotel pools and motels and, um, apartment complexes also. Um, you know, we're just trying to protect the public from the waterborne illnesses that happen at swimming pools and, right now, we are the only jurisdiction in the area that doesn't have some kind of an ordinance. Um, Platte County, Clay County, Independence, Kansas City, they all, all their health departments are inspecting swimming pools.
Is it mostly water falling in there inspecting or is there other items they're inspecting when they go out?
Um, well, they're, they're looking for safety equipment to be present at the pool, you know, the, the hooks and the, the weaves and things like that that you need to have. Um, they're also looking at clarity of the water and, um, you know, preventing drownings and, um, making sure that there's an emergency phone available if something were to happen to someone in the pool, if there's not a lifeguard, um, you know. It's a, it's a basic ordinance that covers a lot of stuff, but it's, it's all related to the swimming pools.
Would like to mention as well, Mister Mayor, that, uh, the, Jackson County will be providing this service for municipalities without, uh, any charge.
And there won't be a fee for the city. Um, we don't charge taxing authorities for permits, and we also inspect the restaurants in Grain Valley and all the concession stands with parks and recs, they're all permitted and we do not charge for those permits either, so.
But would there be a charge, like the HOA and everything for, and what would that be?
It's gonna be a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Yeah.
And that would cover the cost of the inspections and...
Any questions?
I mean, we do take care of other municipalities also. We take care of the summits, we bring, um, Raindown, Granby, Hill Grove.
Since we contract out the services for the pool, is that covered under that contract? Do they do any of those kinds of things?
Um, let Shannon speak to that. I mean, typ- typically, they, they would check our fault, is it?
Right, I mean, Midwest Pool Management, um, not only manages our city facility, but they manage several in Kansas City, Blue Springs, and at one point, I believe Summit Area as well, too. Now, they do check and, and they make sure that we have the safety apparatuses and our water chemistry is correct and, and things of that nature, but, um, I think where they manage other facilities in other places, I still think it's ultimately the health department that would come in and make sure that everything is, is up to par with, uh, with safety and the rules and regulations with this, this involved with public health. Um, and I don't, I assume this doesn't include, this would include our facility as well. So I, I mean, I, I don't see a downside of, of this for us at our, our purpose.
I feel very confident that Shannon takes care of the pools correctly here. Um, you know, we have concerns about some of the other pools. We don't really have concerns about the city pools because we know the cities are taking the time and doing the right thing. Um, but we've had some incidents that where people have gotten very sick at hotels and apartment complexes and, you know, ended up with crypto and, you know.
But the, the city would still be paying your fee then, too.
We don't charge it. We don't charge it.
Okay.
When you say, when you say, uh, you mentioned like having an emergency phone, so if an HOA doesn't have an emergency phone in their pool area, then you shut down the pool until a phone's installed and then that cost is incurred by the HOA, is that?
I would hope that we would be a little bit more lenient with that, uh, with starting an ordinance. I think we would probably, you know, inform people of what the new rules would be and give them a proper amount of time to come into compliance. Um, I think it's very important to have an emergency phone though.
Uh, I'm not-
You know, if a child's drowning, I mean-
Right. I'm not disagreeing, I'm just, you know, things like that.
Yeah, yeah, I, those are things that we would have to look at on an individual basis and see what we have to do to, you know, if it's a big apartment complex, they probably can afford to put a phone in out, right outside the office where somebody could call. Um, several of them already have phones, we've kind of checked into that a little bit, so.
I, I agree, that could be one of the areas I could see HOA especially, uh, kind of concerned, to put a phone there and run in them three, four hundred dollars or more a year.
Mhm.
Put a phone there for the few months of the summer.
Plus, plus Austin's, Justin, HOA's gonna have a lot of money to start with. As far as phones, I mean, I've not been anywhere there where there's not, if there's ten people, there's not twenty cell phones. Um, you know, I, I like the idea of inspecting for the safety equipment, make sure they have that, the pool quality, doing that twice a year. Now, your pool can go bad in a week or two's time, so I don't, you know, I, I think that a cost I'm not in favor of, um, for that, you know, I mean, maybe commercial entities, you know, p- um, hotels, things of that nature, I can understand that for HOA, they have a little problem with that.
What would be the, um, time standard, um, will you guys start this next year to give them enough time to have them converse about it, see if they agree with it?
We were hoping to go before our legislature and get it approved first and then, um, be able to mail a letter out to everyone the first of the year.
So, that gives them some, what, pool opening next year to try to have everything?
May.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you know, if the phone is gonna be a huge issue, then that's something that we would have to work out.
Well, I have to be with you, if it's not gonna be the phone, it's gonna, it's gonna be the dues. I mean, well, I say we have a HOA and people complain if we don't have a pool, but people don't wanna pay their money for a pool. So, you can imagine them going up more on their yearly dues. I'm sure people are not gonna be happy with paying more for a pool, I'm sure they're not, so that's gonna be an issue.
We get lots of complaints every year from the HOA pools about how dirty they are-
I'm sure it's both ways, absolutely, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure that too. Yeah.
And Jackson County Health Department, this under Truman Medical Center, has done some studies on how many people get crypto and stuff.
Yeah, I'm sure of that.
And it, it's kind of shocking when you look at it and see how many people actually get sick swimming in those HOA pools.
I can believe that too, I mean, you're looking at people paying for health insurance too to take their fees to the doctor office as well, so I can see it being both ways, yeah.
I do think, you know, just from an administrative side of it or operations side, I think this makes very good sense to have Jackson County be the inspecting authority over this. Uh, it's, it is a very important public health issue. Recently, one of the, actually one of the channels, I don't know, it's probably Channel Nine, 'cause that's usually what I watch, but they ran a story about this regarding the amount of illnesses, uh, that come out of HOA apartment building swimming pools because there's no policing over it at all. I mean, essentially, you, you have no idea what you're jumping into when you let your three or four-year-old get into the swimming pool. Um, I know as, as a resident and where I previously lived, previously lived, the HOA had a swimming pool, and while people don't wanna see those prices or fees increase for their HOA dues, I think it's, we have an obligation to, um, to at, at least support, uh, public health to that extent. It'd be similar to not going into a restaurant because the owners would have to increase, you know, the, the prices to the consumer, it's kind of the cost of business in my mind. And when I found out that we didn't inspect swimming pools, I was actually pretty shocked, uh, because I know that, you know, surrounding counties do have a full-on inspection program and the public health, uh, department usually will, will handle that.
Whose responsibility will it be to notify all of these organizations and just test? Is it the health department will be going to all these facilities and, and letting them know?
Really, the only thing that, that Jackson County would be looking for from, from the board is, uh, for a vote, uh, for the Board of Aldermen to vote to direct a letter of support, uh, to be sent to the county legislature for this ordinance. And that would be executed by the mayor. Most likely, I would draft it and just say that we have, you know, considered the, the ordinance that's before, that's gonna go before the legislature and that the Grain Valley Board of Aldermen supports it.
We don't have, we don't have an actual proposed ordinance, although the prior letter of paper, I'm correct?
Not yet, it's, well, uh, the letter or the ordinance, I, was it with the letter?
No.
I don't think it's drafted yet.
We, we do have a draft of the ordinance, um, you know, we're, it hasn't been approved by our legislature yet, so it would have to go through approval with them first.
If you had any ordinance, you wouldn't be a city, wouldn't you?
Correct.
Right.
Well, it's kind of easier now, I was wondering if the board would wanna see what that draft proposal was gonna be before they agreed to have a letter of, it sounds like there's some concerns.
So I don't-
I would, no one, I'm saying I would, I would like to see it happen as opposed to just a general vague idea of what I'm agreeing with.
Yeah, well, the, the ordinance will lay out everything that will be required during the inspections, like the phone and all the safety, other safety equipment.
I mean, I think if you could, I think if you could get, if you could get us your propos- your draft, I think that would probably, they would wanna see that before we agree. They just forward that to me and I can get it to, uh, the Board of Aldermen and, um, kind of get a temperature and find out if there's additional questions. I think the ordinance would be pretty clear, may not even need to return for a subsequent vote, but I'll keep in touch with you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, another new business, move on to presentations.
Mister Potter from Midcontinent Public Library is here to speak to the board tonight.
Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Uh, I wanted to, actually, I've been visiting with a lot of folks over the last, uh, several months to kind of bring them up to speed with some things that the library, uh, has on the horizon and, uh, give you an opportunity to hear about some of those. And so I've got a little bit of a prepared, um, uh, prepared presentation, and it won't take too long, I promise. Um, just a little bit about Midcontinent, I mean, I know you all know about Midcontinent here in town, but it, it's interesting to know a little bit more about Midcontinent Public Library as an organization. We are actually the largest political subdivision and one of the largest political subdivisions in the state of Missouri. We have seven hundred and ninety thousand people that live within the library district. Um, we are just under fourteen hundred square miles in terms of area, and it makes us more populous than four US states in terms of our library district. We're comprised of thirty-five locations, uh, there were nine million items that we, uh, loaned out annually just this last year, and just about four million people visited the library last year. In general, the library is a pretty good investment. Uh, for every one dollar in revenue, we generate three dollars and fifty cents in service, and that's, that's held pretty steady for the last couple of years. Um, the Grain Valley branch loaned a hundred and ten thousand items last year, or about, uh, eight point three items per capita, and that is experiencing an increase, so, so that number's going up. Uh, last year, we had fourteen thousand more visits to the library in Grain Valley Marketplace than we did the last year that we operated on Front Street. So more people are using the library in Grain Valley, um, visiting the library. Um, in the past, or yesterday, uh, Midcontinent Public Library was a book warehouse and a, uh, a book distribution system. That's pretty much the way people thought about us. We were a place to go to get great service, but that service was generally limited by, uh, our hours of operation and, and our four walls. We couldn't really serve people outside of our four walls or, or only serve people when we were open. But despite all of that, we had been recognized as an exceptional library in the past. Uh, our IMLS National Medal, where we were recognized as one of the five best libraries in the nation a couple of years ago. And we were also, uh, recognized as the Truman Heartland Community Foundation Corporate Citizen of the Year a couple of years ago, which I'm actually more proud of that than I was of the National Medal because that meant that the people in our community recognized that, that we were doing good things. Today, Midcontinent Public Library is focused on several different initiatives. One of those initiatives is school readiness and helping all children reach third grade reading proficiency. We do that through a number of different programs and one of the, uh, one of the handouts that you have in your folder talks about our Rural Reader Program. Uh, where, what that involves is our literacy-based Storytime, our Summer Reading Program, uh, as well as our Thousand Books by, uh, by kindergarten, encouraging all adults to read a thousand books to children by the time they reach kindergarten. Now, any of you have a little one in your life, know that's not as daunting as it sounds 'cause you get to read Goodnight Moon five hundred times and then the rest of it's pretty much gravy from that point on. Uh, we do have, we've been working on research, Midcontinent's been working on research, showing that children that read in the summer maintain their learning skills and may even grow in their skills over the summer. And that's actually new groundbreaking research. I mean, it's pretty intuitive, but no one had actually done the research. So basically, what we're saying is that teachers, if your kids participate in Summer Reading Program, teachers don't have to start all over again in the fall re-teaching everything that they forgot in the summer. Uh, another main, main focus of Midcontinent Public Library is our Square One Small Business Initiative, and this is helping small businesses grow and create a job-ready workforce. So we accomplished this through Square One, as I mentioned. Uh, last year, just like to bottom line this, because really, that's the best way to do is just drop, jump to our bottom line. Last year, we helped launch forty-five small businesses through this effort. And there, there are some chambers of commerce and groups like that that don't launch forty-five businesses in a year, but your library actually did help launch forty-five small businesses. We also provide online learning and free courses on several topics. These courses are fun, but they also help people learn necessary skills to become job-ready through the free online instructor-led courses like Universal Class Gale Courses in our Career Online High School. And so what this allows people to do is, you know, you're, you're at work and they've decided to upgrade to Windows Ten, you can actually take an instructor-led class on your own time, uh, on your own schedule through the library and, and sort of get taught up to speed if that's what you wanna do. If you need to take a certification test, if you're wanting to take a firefighter certification test or an EMT test or something like that, we, we have those. And people can take those online on their own time, uh, just using their library card to access that. So that's Midcontinent Public Library today, but tomorrow, Midcontinent Public Library can be so much more. We can be a place to foster collaboration and build a stronger community, a place with purposeful space with different kinds of use as we reinvest in our facilities. What we're looking to do is build walls around a lot of our programming space, allowing kids to be allowed without encroaching on the needs of other folks. And so if you've visited our libraries, we actually have walls in our new libraries here in Grain Valley, but if you've visited the library in Oak Grove or Blue Springs or the old Grain Valley Library, you know, we've got Storytime, kids will get excited and they'd sort of overtake the building with their noise. So what we wanna do is we wanna create a library where the kids can still do that, but we can still create dedicated intentional space so people can use the library without encroaching on each other a, and use it in the way that they see fit. Um, we want to allow the public to use this space that I'm talking about, this programming space, uh, for their own meetings when we aren't programmed. So it's not just that we're helping build community, but other folks can have meetings and, and, uh, and, and build a stronger Grain Valley. Uh, building small collaboration rooms for tutoring and group study and consultation is something that has been extremely popular in all of our buildings, and that's something that we're looking to do. And then we will enhance our outdoor space so the people can, uh, sit outside and use the library as well as sit inside. And that's something that we didn't think about back in the eighties when we first built our buildings, but people do like to enjoy the outdoor on, on nice days, and so we wanna make sure that there's places where people can sit in the shade, they can still access Wi-Fi, uh, the kids can access, uh, Wi-Fi with their computers because it's Saturday night and, or Sunday night and they haven't done their homework yet, and, and this is a way that people can do that. So, uh, the library needs to be a place where people can constantly upgrade their learning and so people can navigate the future through the, through the new learning that they need to, to have. And that we will take all of our service to the people, whether those people are in our building, in cyberspace, or someplace else. So that, that's, that's what a library looks like today and tomorrow. But for Midcontinent Public Library, uh, we likely won't be able to do all of those things in the future without additional resources. So the board took the last several months to develop plans to consider finances, to evaluate long-range needs and determine the services that we need to provide, and also to balance what's a need versus what to want and try to, to pare that down. The board started to come together around the idea that Midcontinent Public Library should invest in the future by providing more access, better spaces, stronger collections, and more meaningful services to all to build a better community. Ultimately, they decided to place a question before the voters to ask for additional resources to help for the first time in a generation. Uh, the question will be on the November ballot. The increase per household will be about twenty-two dollars or about the cost of a hardbound book, uh, based on the average home value within the library district. About half of the new revenue will go toward upgrading the library's capital investment through building and technology improvement, and the other half will be used to bolster access to services, including expanded hours and better collection of materials. So tonight, I'm really only asking one thing from you for, for tonight, is that because you're people of influence in the community, um, I know people come to you because you're in the know and, and you know what's happening. So I want you to feel free to, to share with everybody in the community what I've shared with you tonight. Also, I want you to encourage people to talk with me or the branch managers in all of our libraries to get more information about what it is that we're looking to do. Um, I know that they would be happy to provide more information on this topic to anybody who's interested, and, and finally, feel free to invite me to speak to other groups. They may want to know more about the future of the library, uh, and, and certainly, I would be happy, uh, to talk with you further about, uh, the future plans of Midcontinent Public Library.
Any questions?
Mister Mayor. Members of the board, before, uh, Steve leaves or you ask any questions.
I often forget that you-
No, I see Steve on a regular basis that you guys probably don't. So, um, Steve is the Executive Director of Midcontinent Public Library. He's also a resident here in Grain Valley, so he's very engaged, uh, both from the library side and as well as the citizen side, so he's a, a good- So he's a, a good resource to have here in the community. Um, we get together and visit on occasion and, and he provides, uh, sound advice to, uh, to, to the group that we have. So I apologize I didn't make that introduction on the way up, but again, assumptions.
And just, uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I want everyone to also understand that part of the question passes would be a proposed new library within, within Grain Valley.
Yeah, that's, that is correct, Mr. Mayor. And in fact, um, on, on the sheet that's in here, you'll see this board. And part of what our plan is, is, you know, looking at the growth that's in Eastern Jackson County and particularly in the community of Grain Valley, it makes sense for us to invest in, in a fifteen thousand square foot library, a permanent home, uh, so that we're no longer leasing materi-, uh, leasing space. We love where we are, but, but you certainly always want to own your own home as opposed to rent if you can. And so this is what we're looking to do. So you'll find this, this sheet, and I, I believe Mary has a board, uh, at Grain Valley Branch that explains this as well. But yes, that is definitely part of the, part of the proposal.
And there's no questions, will there?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you seen the ordinances or resolutions? We've watched the city attorney's report.
I have, of course.
Accept the administrator's staff report? Uh, we'll start with Mr. Davies.
I know, I have, uh, spoken to the board about the East Metro Municipal Challenge. It's areas of events that, uh, cities probably need, uh, surrounding communities and human. And kind of the whole goal of this was first, uh, five years ago, it's an opportunity for, uh, the city employees and those that serve on, um, boards, the opportunity to, uh, meet with other employees and board members from other communities. Kind of have that, uh, opportunity for networking and camaraderie. But it's also an opportunity to get out and, um, uh, endorse some physical activity and, and get out and get the body moving a little bit and so forth. So, um, I just wanted to provide you with, we're about the midway point of this year's Eastern Metro Municipal Challenge. And, uh, the sheet that I provided to you kind of gives the overall points, uh, on who's, uh, ahead of who with this year's games. I mean, and as you can see, we're in third place. If you recall, we actually partnered with the city employees of Oak Grove and compete against, um, Blue Springs and Independence, Raymore and some of the larger communities. Over the last couple of years, we've actually picked up Pleasant Hill and Raymore. They weren't the communities that initially participated in this. But wanted to kind of provide an update, we've got about three more weeks left of, uh, events to participate in. Again, these events are held, uh, on city facilities. And the city employees are the ones that basically run the events. And so there were several events in Blue Springs at their, Blue Springs Fieldhouse where city employees kind of coordinated and ran the event. And Independence has several, their parks, their community centers. And of course, we do as well, too. We, we actually, the next event that's coming up is Dodgeball, which we host here at the, uh, Grain Valley Community Center. And, uh, it'll carry on through the end of this month and, and, uh, probably not the next meeting, but the meeting after that, I'll kind of provide a, uh, synopsis of how the games went this year. But anyway, just wanted to provide you information on that and all the events that the cities have come together to, to put on, on, for the benefit of the city employees as well as the elected officials. I know we've had a couple of elected officials, a few here right up front that have, uh, participated in several. I know two just as recently as last week when we played sand volleyball. We had a, a great turnout to where we had to actually make two Grain Valley-Oak Grove teams. Uh, I know Bob's team came in third, Janita's team came in second. And so our, our Grain Valley-Oak Grove teams got second and third out, I believe, six or seven teams total. So we were, we were pretty happy about that. This past weekend, one of our public works employees got first in the disc golf competition. Held out, it wasn't held, so. Anyway, just wanted to.
I did my part in Mary's shootout, you know?
And to kick off the games, there's the mayor's shootout, which.
I don't know about the city administrator shootout.
And this is the first year that we have the administrator shootout.
Well, there's only four city administrators in the shootout and you come in third.
You didn't hire me for my shooting skills.
Shannon, I didn't realize they had archery.
Yeah, that, that was actually a new event this year that they kind of brought in at the last minute. Pickleball was another one, a new one that we put together for this year. So for the most part, we add events every now and then if the interest isn't there, we'll drop one or two.
Did you even make a basket? Busting, busting my chops after the rib eat off?
Blue Springs looks like they've already scored in every thing. Has everything already taken place?
Uh, basically everything that has a number in the rows, an event that has taken place.
Yes, because we haven't had people in all those.
Yeah, and, and that's sometimes.
They've already scored in everything and obviously some of the competitions haven't taken place yet.
Well, if you look at the boxes that are empty, those are the events that have not taken place yet. So where you'll see a zero for some people, it's because we didn't have any participants.
Oh, what I'm saying is Blue Springs, Pleasant Hill has a score in every bracket already.
Yeah, they, they won or they had somebody there to compete.
Yeah, they've either got first, second, or third in all the events down to where it stops.
Oh, okay.
Well, the bottom have done this.
Okay, those are the only ones left to be done.
That's why I asked about archery, I would've done archery, I didn't know they had.
I didn't really get four, I would've done that.
Yeah, and, well, I'll, I'll try to get something out again. We, we sent something out, oh, about three weeks ago before the games kicked off, listed all the events and times. Now, there are some events that aren't within the, this, the month of August. So like the, the trivia was held back in March, uh, here at the community center. And, um, so we, the, the majority of the events are in August, but we spread some of them out just to try to keep people interested and engaged throughout the course of the year. But, uh, generally when an event comes up, uh, either myself or Melissa will send out a mass email about an upcoming event, um, that's copied with the city employees as well as the elected officials. So if there is ever an interest, please don't hesitate to contact Melissa or I if you'd like to participate. We're always looking for specific people.
Shannon, so if a, a city shows up and nobody else shows up, do they get points?
Yeah, if it's a bracketed event and the, both cities have been placed in a bracket to play, the team that does not show up basically will get penalty points. So they'll get points deducted from their overall score.
So are you saying that nobody signed up for trivia because the zeros across the board?
No, there's no points allowed.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so that's not a bracketed event.
Okay, 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 alright.
And see, we host trivia and so there, we do have several, uh, employees as well as Oak Grove that comes out and works it. And so sometimes it's hard for us to feel equal in every event.
Well, Shannon, I wanted to say, uh, to Kalila, your daughter was phenomenal in flag football. She helped us out to get those points we got, you know, and our detective and his poor son, they got clobbered by Blue Springs and Independence. It would've been nice to have more men instead of having five women on a flag football team against all men, police officers and all, uh, from Independence and Blue Springs. But we held her on and I got a broken wrist basically, but, it was a lot of hard work, but your daughter, she stepped up her game. They, her daughter really shocked them, had a lot of guys really upset because she was getting touchdowns on them. They wouldn't expect a, a young girl to do that with some big men. So thank you for your, your daughter helping out.
Uh, one other thing, uh, the Feed the Need Kickball Tournament is this upcoming Saturday, uh, out at Monkey Mountain Park, Saturday, August thirteenth. Uh, games will start at nine AM. Uh, historically, as you all know, this has been a softball tournament. Uh, but there was discussion with the Assistance Council about maybe trying something different to try to attract more participants and more teams and so forth. So, uh, they're trying kickball this year. Uh, last time I checked with Jim, I do believe we have six teams, uh, total for the, for the event. Um, and I do believe as usual, the Assistance Council will, uh, offer concessions out there of which the proceeds also go to the Assistance Council. So if anybody's, has some free time on Saturday, come on out to Monkey Mountain Park, watch some kickball and buy a hot dog or two, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Chief.
Well, I'd be the annual national timeout against crime, about to be starting at six o'clock. We, uh, have promoted it quite aggressively. We have a lot of new events and events and they've been all the time. We have a lot of, uh, items that'll be given away as, uh, rapid prizes. It is a wide array, everything from, uh, gun supplies to, uh, we have a couple of coupons for one-hour massages. We have a coupon for one free, uh, devil cremation, uh, all kinds of highly, highly contested stuff.
Is that a highlight?
Yeah. No, we, we play a lot, we play a lot of stuff where we did that. We have, again, enlisted the services of, uh, Orly Cook, uh, Johnson, who will cook hot dogs for us. So, uh, we have helicopters and A-9s, penetration and our little supports and, and tough tanks. It'll be a wide array of entertainment things. I did notice, uh, that it was, it was on at six o'clock, you know, kind of behind tonight, so.
Did they really push that dog cremation as a prize, I hope? That's all crowds.
Is there a headline on the use of cremation?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Expires in six months. Safe bet. Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I just have two things. First, uh, last, at the last board meeting, Sinead had asked that everybody check their calendars. Um, for September seventeenth for the toast of our towns, we need to, uh, get a head count to find out who all is going to be able to attend that night, um, in honor, to honor Daryl Grooms as our Citizen of the Year. I don't know if everybody knows their availability that evening. Um, so I kind of thought I would just go down the line and, and find out if you're going to be available or if you need to get back with me. So Alderman Stanley, do you know yet?
I've already, uh, talked to Sinead about me.
Okay.
I'll be there and I'll be by myself.
Okay. Will you have a guest with you? That guy?
He's not invited.
He doesn't know you. Mr. Mayor, you're going to be there, okay?
Me and my boss.
Okay. And then we'll follow up with, uh, Alderman Palacek. Okay, the only other thing that I wanted to talk to you before we adjourn into executive session was that I've, uh, completed the, uh, mid-year review of our finances at the end of the second quarter. Uh, well, quarterly, we go through and I monitor our finances to see where we're at. Um, after, uh, June is completely submitted and we have the, uh, the June books closed out, I go ahead and start doing a review. So I'm happy to report that all of the expenditures are under budget, uh, year-to-date. So, um, that means that we've spent less than fifty percent of our annual budget in the major funds. So, uh, the general fund, park fund, transportation, water and sewer are all, uh, under budget. And that's just, uh, you know, that's just an effort to point out the fact that we, even though we do budget amounts for certain things, we still do continue to watch that bottom line and the, the expenses, uh, that, that we have throughout the year. I'm also happy to report that our revenues are all on track. Every category of revenue is forecasted to be, uh, a little bit above what we budgeted, so that's good. But specifically, I wanted to mention our sales tax. Uh, year, year-to-date, we are ahead on the sales tax. And my forecast, which I, I do every year and it tends to be pretty accurate when we come to the end of the year, uh, forecast shows that we're going to be about fifteen percent above, uh, what we budgeted for revenues, uh, this year. So that'll, we'll, we'll actually realize a hundred and fifteen percent of our revenues. That's a very conservative estimate. That's, that's slicing the pie as conservatively as I could. Uh, if we go with, um, the actual just true to date, uh, sales tax number and carry that out through the end of the year, uh, that puts us about a hundred and forty percent of actual revenue or budgeted revenue. So, um, good news considering we did increase revenues last year by about six percent in our budget. It looks like we're going to continue to exceed that. And, um, have better news to report at budget time, which is actually coming up right now where the department heads submitted their budgets. Uh, they were due August first. And Kathy and I are doing our first review of it. And we will, over the next, uh, four to six weeks, be working with the department heads to come up with a balanced budget to present to the board at the budget hearings, uh, at the end of September and in October. So that is all I have right now, Mr. Mayor.
Alright. Next up then is Board of Alderman Reports and Comments, Alderman Arnold.
Couple of things. Um, I've got the codes. The, uh, I've got a lady contacting me about an address on Foxtail. She said she's been in talking with codes department. Maybe she's wanting something to occur a lot faster. She sent me some pictures and stuff, I'll try and forward the emails to you.
Please.
Have you tried to keep in the loop of what's going on with that one?
Yes.
I don't know if I can see what her real concerns are beyond our intrusion onto the person.
Yeah, it was, I, it was in the backyard because I got the pictures too and I think Ray, I, and Ray was on email also, so I don't. Apparently he's done something, but I know we've had, uh, we've had issues with backyards and other places too. I know backyards that kind of itchy sometimes.
Yeah, I think the big part is whether or not it's something we can actually see. We get some neighbors, if they're up above, they can see in the backyard, sometimes then we can see in the street. So what if, sometimes if it's like a neighbor that's filing, like a complaint, if they give permission where it can go and see it.
The pictures she took were from the back, she must've was behind the individual.
Well, wait, she lives next door, but she must've went around to the neighborhood behind to get the pictures or whatever. I mean, she's bad at pointing, they were taking, so I'll forward those to you again to let me know what, what we're going there. Didn't, didn't know what status was on the Whiskey Tango pop-up concert. Did we incur additional expense due to the fact that they weren't coordinating that with us sooner? And don't, normally when we have big events, some type of fees that are expected because of, because of the additional costs of being involved with it and where we at on that?
Yeah, and Chief actually met with Mr. Brown last week.
Yes, because we were called off, or like everyone else, and, uh, I required Mr. Brown to respond to my office. Two weeks and we could discuss my concerns. The primary thing was, they're, they indicated they were, they were, uh, they were supposed to keep the house a secret. And I said, well, I find the secret of who they, but when they have any indication that they're going out a large-scale concert that was going to disrupt grabbing anything else, they would notify public safety, both myself and, and your department. And he, he understood that and, uh, we discussed problems that was, I mean, we're throwing that plan together on such a quick basis, everybody was fine. While we were required, we had to bring in a contingent of, I mean, true pay, I would throw all of their words. We had to shut down Main Street when, uh, when the Alroge got caught and bring in, uh, and have some county sheriffs that were, were around. So there were a lot of issues that we discussed and, uh, we monitored. Of course, I think my point was received by Mr. Brown, I disagree.
I think one of the questions and two that you're getting to, Alderman Arnold, is are we going to charge Whiskey Tango for the overtime incurred? So I'm not sure if we incurred any overtime on, we held somebody over.
I can run those numbers, we had to use a quick shitting and bring in the, yeah, so. But I can, I can come up with probably, I guess, costs and houses and, uh, what the cost of.
That was.
We did have at least two or three houses that stayed late.
We did, also had that same conversation with Eddie about CJC and the extra resources that they put down there. So we will probably actually talk to you guys to find out what path you're going to take and see if we can come from the united front on that issue.
Isn't, I mean, isn't it per ordinance that there's an event over X amount of people? We're supposed to be notified and there's something?
Well, yeah, there's, there's a special event permit, yeah, absolutely.
That one's still under, probably, right?
Yes. That's where, that's the gray area where we have to use the stretch and not take Blake Shelton out of town because that would give nothing but bad press to Grain Valley. Alderman Headley?
Um, just a reminder, with everything else going on Saturday and tomorrow night, um, Athletes of Honors having their bowling, uh, fundraising event Sunday from one. of Honors having their bowling fundraising event Sunday from one to four, so anyone that wants tickets, there's a number of us in the room that are signing, so.
Oh, yeah. And if you would like to bowl, I put this out to staff, the deadline is this afternoon. I need to go back and make sure, but I think I still have some extra spots sponsoring two teams for that event on Sunday, so I think I have two or three extra spots. So, if you want to bowl, you want to come join my team, free of charge.
Do you bowl there, you play basketball?
Yes. But you should, hey, you should see my outfit for bowling.
You have an outfit picked out, great. For those of you, do we have a picture of this outfit?
Oh, yeah.
For those who have not seen it?
It was featured in the Blue Springs Employee Publication.
That's ridiculous. You need to see this outfit you wore.
Well, I just didn't know for sure. Oh, yeah.
That's around there, man. That's around. I was actually slightly embarrassed.
Oh, come on. There's nothing to be ashamed of there.
They're like, take your picture with your city administrator. I'm like, do I have to?
Can you store as high bowling as you do golf?
Oh, my God. Those courts are very... Shannon, was this back in the nineteen seventies or eighties? Please tell me it wasn't recent.
I picked that entire outfit up from Red Rex for five dollars.
Okay, it's about Halloween costume.
Well, it looks like. Oh, you even brought copies.
Yeah. Thanks, Dan.
I mean, look at those legs. Ryan, I'm going to put this up in my window at my job, they can see it, in my car, in my car.
All right. I'll be available for autographs afterward.
He looks like...
Ryan, you're going to have, you're going to have two teams, eh?
Yes, sir.
You want to get a late council?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'll be getting those tickets tomorrow. I was waiting until the deadline is this afternoon or this evening for all the city employees, but I'm going to go ahead and buy, or have two teams. So, yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Alderman West?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Thompson?
I think I've mentioned this before, and I don't remember the answer on it. That phone box that's on Snibar is always probably a block, block and a half east of the lake there. It is a rusted, ugly-looking piece of garbage. Can we do something? Is that owned by the phone company or...?
It most likely is. Like, we can find out who owns it and...
Can we do something to get them, I mean, that looks like crap right there on the, on a main thoroughfare like that?
Yeah, absolutely. We can reach out to them. If they won't do anything, we'll just go out and spray paint it ourselves.
Well, I don't, it's beyond spray painting. It is rusted away completely. It's, I'm surprised they would have it out to protect there.
Was it on the lake?
It's on the, it's on the south side of the street, and it's just east of the lake, probably a block, block and a half. But it is, I mean, somewhere in poor condition. That is just pathetic.
We'll get some pictures of it and send it to, find out who owns the utility, and then we'll send it to their government relations liaison. Alderman Stanley?
The only thing that I have, last week, I had a few parents calling me upset because they had the solicitors, some gentleman, I think he's trying to do maybe pest control there, and they're upset because a lot of their kids are home by themselves, and they didn't just come by once, they came by twice or three times, and had a lot of parents and their kids upset and scared. So, I don't know what we can do about that.
Well, I think Sinead checked them. They actually, surprisingly, had the public's license, if it's the same one. And if they can call and...
They all came in to go up to the 311, but they couldn't get a record check on it.
I mean, but my understanding is if they're being, like, I guess overly aggressive or whatever, you can call and complain, and we can revoke that license threat.
It's like having, after people off work, where they probably come at a certain time, because, I mean, a lot of people leave their kids here, because they don't have daycare, they're too old to do daycare, just the fact that people being at work and their kids calling, and maybe they should come after...
They can get, they can get on the no solicitors list, too, that those addresses are handed as individuals, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we recently actually just revamped it, put a form out online that people can fill out and then turn into the city. And any time that somebody comes in to get a solicitor's permit, we hand this list to them. It's been an ordinance for years, but we've never had the no solicitors permit or list, and so we've really been pushing for folks to fill those out if they don't want solicitors there.
Talk to somebody, do a contact, too.
This guy was pretty aggressive. I was there when, when my wife went to the door, and she told him three or four times, not interested, go away, I'm fixing dinner. And, I mean, she had about, you know, about slammed the door in his face to get rid of...
A blue shirt, like, like, yeah, that's what I told him. It was like it came up three times.
You know what company it was by chance?
It's, that was, it was like the mayor's, it's a awkward blue shirt.
It's going to be the one, the pest control, you have the thing on.
Yeah.
But it's all the same company, wasn't it? It's the same company.
The company name.
I don't know, one of them, I don't know if he was tired, he was leaning on somebody's actual fence, too, you know, and that was probably scary.
I always get them confused, because when they come to the door, I always ask them to see their license, and this guy couldn't provide it, so I didn't think he had one. Apparently, he did, he just didn't know what to talk about.
Well, several, I've seen the guy in several, I mean, I've seen him around town a couple of times, and several people posted pictures of him on Facebook, and it was the same guy at my house, and he was pretty aggressive, you know, he would, he just didn't take a simple no and leave.
Well, we can reach out to them. I would just encourage, if there's somebody out there also that's being that way, that's just not taking a no, just call us. I mean, we have the right to revoke that permit.
I didn't realize that part of our permitting process.
Yeah.
And there was, there was another one that's working around town, a lady from Texas who's selling education and she's got a lot of passion, but she was unable to awake resting at night, required her, I mean, I had a talk with her, and her move on work time, and I didn't hear from her.
Uh, next up is the mayor's report. I don't have anything additional to add. Do you have an executive session for legal and personnel, correct? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion into adjournment to executive session.
I'm moved.
Question, Alderman Headley, got a second? Second, Alderman Arnold, any discussion? See you, nuttin', on Thursday, say aye.
Aye.
Call at the same time, Alderman Arnold. Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman West?
Yes.
Alderman Thompson?
Yes.
Alderman Stanley?
Yes.